Our Father, who art in heaven, thou wouldst be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, and if we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, for ever and ever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item C is approval of minutes from August 16th, 2021, regular council meeting minutes. In the absence of any objections or corrections, a minute shall stand approved. Hearing none, they stand approved. Item D, citizen communication. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address council on something other than what is on the agenda, can step up to the podium. If you're on WebEx, go ahead and put a message in the chat and we will periodically check that. Item E is reports from council committees. E1 Finance and Budget Committee met on August 23rd, 2021, and reviewed the draft 2022 debt schedule and also proposed the 2022 budget calendar. E2 Safety and Human Resource Committee did not meet on August 23rd due to lack of agenda items and nor did the Technology and Communications Committee did not meet tonight due to lack of agenda items. Item G, introductions of new ordinances and resolutions. We have none. Item H is second readings of ordinances and resolutions. H1 is ordinance number 031-21, an ordinance authorizing an economic development agreement between the city of Napoleon, Ohio, the Community Improvement Corporation of Henry County, Ohio, and Keller Logistics Incorporated regarding the construction of an industrial building within the city of Napoleon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. You have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Joel?
Really nothing new to report on this exciting item. So we do have Jen here too to answer any questions, but things are still moving along. Just as an update, you'll see later in the agenda the CRA agreement to direct the law directive to draft legislation. The school board did pass it, so now it's on to city council and we are actually anticipating things kind of moving along. So we're trying to schedule a closing date.
Great, thank you. Welcome Jen, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Malik?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, that will move on to third read. Item H2 is resolution number 032-21, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to acquire 12.91 acres of land located within the city of Napoleon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. You have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Joel?
Thank you, Council President. Well, I did mention last time I did recommend moving forward with first reading and we were going to look into the wetland issue. So I think what we found is that there are wetlands on the property, roughly 2.8 acres. Now, that's unofficial because they didn't, ODOT, when they looked at the property originally, didn't complete the full report, but they were identified. So I did put together, I don't know if everybody had a chance to look at this, so I'll just go through this real quick. ODOT discovered this and produced a document and the former owner allowed ODOT to do that in a purchase agreement that he had with them. So I was unaware of that at the time when that they put together a development agreement for that and went through that process. But also it is suspected that the other former owner, prior to that previous owner, allowed somebody to discard ditch dredgings on the property, which is likely how the wetland plants got there and were established. Knowing this and working off the information that we have, it appears that there's roughly 2.8 acres of impacted land and we suspect that it's a low grade, which is a tier one or a category one wetland, which is the lowest quality of wetland. There are three categories of that. When wetlands are involved, there's a governing agency. In this case, it's likely going to be the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers because of its proximity to the ditch that drains into a waterway and its proximity to waters of the state, which is the Montney River. And typically when you have wetlands, land that is impacted by wetlands, you have to come up with a wetland determination and delineation study and that'll determine how many, how much acreage and the category of wetland that it is in this case. And then to mitigate that wetland, basically what you do is you have to pay a sum of money to an agency that then buys land and creates wetlands in another location to offset it. In this case, we have a range of somewhere between $37,500 and $48,000 per acre. Assuming these are accurate estimates, the total cost breakdown of the entire transaction is seen here. Phase one assessment was already planned. The wetland study was added. The purchase would remain at 95. The property cleanup, I estimate around 17,500. That could be lower, that's a little conservative. And then wetland mitigation, that's on the high end of $134,400. So totaling roughly just a little over a quarter million dollars. But even at this conservative value, I think, you know, all expenses in would put the acreage at just under $20,000 per acre, which I still, in my opinion, my estimation is still at or below the market value of industrial property in Napoleon. Fair market value is probably in the 20 to $25,000 range. I don't know, you've probably heard me say this before. When I first came here, I thought that industrial acreage was somewhere between the 17 and 22 range. I think that's, I think it's gone up, especially for a square piece of property that's got the papers to make it developable. But, you know, I put together a recommendation here. I do think that it's in the city's best interest to move forward. And the reasons are, you know, mitigating the wetlands puts the property back into productive use or the opportunity is there to put the property back into productive reuse as opposed to what it is now, which is basically fallow land. That's, second thing is, it's still the opportunity. So the opportunity, the strategic location in the industrial park next to the solar field affords an opportunity of different uses that are out there. So, and then lastly, ODOT was interested once before. If the wetlands are mitigated, it's very possible that they would be interested in the property again, but that would be up to ODOT and knowing what conversations they had with the previous property owner. So the wetland information we got came from ODOT, so there was some kind of interest there. So depending on what that is, we'll have to approach them. But yep, there are risks associated with this, no doubt. But at the end of the day, you know, the value of developed land in the city limits, since we have a finite amount of acreage in the city limits, I think is in the long term better for the city to have this mitigated, removed. There is also a possibility that wetlands can spread. So if this were to lay fallow any longer and it were to get out of hand, there wouldn't be a chance for it to, or an unlikely chance for it to, wetlands to be mitigated and developed. So that's my take on it. So if anybody has any questions or any comments at this point.
You said some of these numbers were estimates. Is there a way to get definite numbers for the wetland mitigation for the cleanup?
So for the mitigation piece?
Mm-hmm.
So the mitigation piece is, it's a formula. So a tier or a category one, I gotta use the right words here. Category one wetland is, it's a one to one and a half ratio. So for every acre that you have, it essentially equates to, I think in today's standard, these 37,500 and 48,000 are a couple of years old. You know, it might be in the 40,000 range now, but you work with your agency and then there are other agencies that do similar things. They mitigate wetlands. So for instance, okay, so ODNR has a mitigation program and so does like the Nature Conservancy. And there might be a cheaper price, so to speak, of what agency to work with to have those wetlands mitigated. And they'll mitigate and maintain them and take care of that and establish them. So for tier one, it's around the $40,000 range.
And we won't know the tier or the exact acreage until the assessment would be done in the wetland study?
I'll know on Thursday.
Oh.
I'll know on Thursday. I'll be walking with the field guy that's looking at it right now. So we do have somebody coming out to take a look at it, to have that more accurate information. There was some property cleanup that was done, so there was some disturbance. It could be less at this point, but you know, the property still has to be cleaned up. But the area where the wetland is concentrated in was the area that was cleaned up. So they'll have a more thorough delineation of it at that point, you know, walking through, measuring, you know, things like that. Hopefully it didn't grow. There's always that possibility. So yeah, my recommendation would be to move forward and I think we'll have more information by the third and final read of exactly what that's going to take. One thing I didn't point out was the schedule is typically about six months to go through the process. So you gotta submit a general permit and it goes to Army Corps of Engineers. And you know, I'm not using this excuse. Usually it's six months, but we should expect six months to a year to have that mitigation process go through at this point.
If it turns out, go ahead. If it turns out to be a different category or tier or whatever the, is there a different formula used as far as?
Yeah. That's the higher, that's the higher rate acreage amount. Which, you know, probably since this is two years old, maybe it's, you know, a couple percent higher.
So it shouldn't get much higher than 50 per acre?
Yeah, that is a safe assumption at this point, in my opinion.
With this information, are we in a position where we could negotiate our purchase price with the seller at all?
Talking with the seller, they are not interested in negotiating the purchase price as they believe that they have a buyer on the backend. Since we have an accepted offer, I mentioned this, you know, the wetlands to them, everything else. They actually asked, the buyer or the seller actually asked if city council would not want to move forward if they would be willing to drop the offer so that they could sell the property quicker. So.
And no idea what that person intentions are for that property?
No.
So they're gonna have to do the same thing we are doing, right?
In theory.
Okay.
And yeah.
Well, they could like wetlands and wanna keep it that way, right? Good. Any other questions or comments?
When I was first here, we had a local business that wanted to expand and we didn't have any industrial space for them. Since then, Jack has come, we built a spec building, got lucky with Jack, and I know that we're talking about, you know, doing something potentially with Keller Logistics. I think that's the right thing to do because then you have industrial space. The trick is after those are gone, what ground do we have that we can potentially put more industrial stuff on? And if you don't have it, you're gonna pay through the nose for it from somebody else. Because as soon as they figure out that the city of Napoleon's trying to buy it, the price is not gonna drop, the price is gonna go up. Was talking with somebody else that owns ground in the industrial park and I said, can you give me a number for your ground? He said, sure, 100,000. I said, oh, for the whole thing? He said, no, per acre. And that's pretty much my reaction too, Jeff. I basically coughed on my, coughed on my coffee. So there is risk involved in this, obviously, but I think if we have ground that we potentially can have to use as economic development in the future, we're setting future councils up for success. So that's where I'm at on this.
And we'll have more information this week, it sounds like.
And we'll have more information with the third read anyways, so.
Yep.
It's a lot of money, but it helps to know that there's possibly already someone that would be interested in it once we're done.
Yes.
A little easier to lay out the money, I think, that way.
Yeah, the city could be interested in it for a solar field.
I mean, there's all kinds of stuff you can do with it, so. I think if you, if you pass it on second read and get some more details by 13 days from now, we'll have some more answers done. And we still have until December 31st for the offer, right? The offer stands until December 31st, okay.
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Malik?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, that will move on to third read. Okay, item H3 is resolution number 034-21, a resolution authorizing a contribution to the Henry County Agricultural Improvement Association and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Joel?
Thank you. I don't have any further anything. I haven't had any discussions with anybody about this since the last meeting, so. One of the things we did talk about was whether or not to suspend today. I don't know if that's something that council wants to do and the reason was the grant application that was being submitted. So it'd be up to council. Contribution's contribution, either way.
I think it is important that we request suspension here just to help out with their state funding. I spoke with Matt Hughes last week. He was very thankful for our consideration in this. I told him, you know, three reads is the standard. He understood that, so he wasn't pushy one way or the other, but I think it is important for us to go ahead and suspend. At this point, I'll make that motion.
One second.
Hey Rox, please call the roll on suspension.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Malik?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
No. Suspension passed. Yes. So we did have the discussion before about when this is gonna commence and section one.
Right. Bill, if we wanted to modify it now, we still can do that and still pass it.
You can still do that today. We amended it and we put it out to everybody involved to make sure that it was the language that everybody requested. So this is the language as amended in there. It should be ready to go unless there's something missing that I'm unaware of.
So this states that it's gonna commence in 2022.
No one does it.
I'm sorry, I'm misreading, commencing in the year.
Facility.
Thank you. I skipped that. Okay.
I thought it looked right when I read it last week.
Okay.
You had me nervous there.
Sorry.
We went over that a few times just to make sure it read as everybody wanted.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Malik?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, that is passed on second read under suspension.
With emergency, it's not.
Pardon me?
Passed with emergency, right?
Yeah. Moving on to item H4, ordinance number 035-21, an ordinance appointing Kevin Geringer as the City Finance Director for the city of Napoleon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. First question, did I say your name correctly? I've heard it a couple of different ways. I wanna make sure I'm saying that right.
You sound correct.
All right. Anyone have any comments or anything they wanna say before we vote on this?
On this one, I'm actually in favor of suspension because we need a, we need a finance director as soon as possible.
Joel's been doing great.
Right, yeah.
No criticism.
Full put.
I agree. All right. Are you making a?
I'll make that motion. That's a rarity for me.
Suspension?
Yeah.
I'll second.
All right, Rox, please call the roll on suspension.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Malik?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Malik?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, that is passed on second read under suspension with emergency.
So Kevin, I have the oath of office right here in front of me. Do you wanna do that now or do you wanna do that on your first day?
Uh, we can do it on the first day.
On the first day, it's completely up to you. Is that all right? What's that? First day? Okay. Well, we have somebody here to take pictures, right, for posterity. Joel, Dustin or Justin can take pictures and put on social media, right? Ryan, if you wanna come on Monday morning, 7:30, bright and early?
Which day?
Next Monday, the 13th. Right?
If it makes it easier for that, we can do it today.
It's up to you. I know we're putting you on the spot here. I didn't know if you wanted to.
Do your hair.
I didn't know I was gonna get a picture.
That's what I mean. It's completely up to you, whatever you wanna do.
Well, just do it the first day.
First day?
Yeah.
Okay, 7:30 Monday morning?
That's where I was.
Okay. Turn the lights on here and come on in, is that all right?
Uh, I probably will not be here.
We'll send you a picture?
Be to school by then. Yeah, if you guys can send one.
We'll send it to you, yep. Please do.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to item I, third readings of ordinances and resolutions. I1 is ordinance number 030-21, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract or contracts for the sale of city-owned bulk electric system, VES, 69 KV assets to American Municipal Transmission LLC, a subsidiary of American Municipal Power Incorporated, AMP, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right. Joel?
Thank you, Council President. Okay, so I put a little explanation here in your packet also. You know, all along we've said we can only transfer what can be recoverable. That's how this process works. Any transmission asset that can be recoverable, we transfer it over in this transaction. Also, just real quick before I get started on that, we have Ed Tatum and Scott Keeswater from AMP on the line too to answer any questions if there are any. But when we first reviewed this, we were looking at the entire substation and I have the presentation, but without getting into too much detail in this explanation right now, circuit breaker number three cannot be added in the asset transfer. So in this transaction, we'll retain ownership of circuit breaker number three. That would put the total transaction value at just under $5.1 million instead of the $5.5 million from previously. But we'll maintain ownership of this as before and that's because that's the breaker that goes to the south side. So we'll maintain that. And also, we're working on this reconfiguration of that substation as it connects with the First Energy Substation and the behind the meter generation assets that are there. So there have been, you know, we'll continue, you know, for the committee chair, I'd like to say that if this passes, we're done, but we're not. We'll be continuing to have our meetings with the electric committee to kinda walk through the process of the different options that there are for reconfiguration. But in short, the presentation really, this is what our one-line diagram looks like right now. You know, here's where the industrial substation is on the line coming in. These are just different iterations of this. Skipping down to other line drawings here. These are all the options. These are all the explanations. These are the cost estimates for those. And then going back, we went back through and looked at other configurations and other explanations of each one. We're liking option four. It is the cheapest and gives us a couple other options in the future for us to talk about. But I think that's more appropriate detail work for the electric committee and the Board of Public Affairs. So, but I just ran through that real quick. Ed and Scott, do you have anything that you'd like to add? Or Greg, sorry Greg, didn't mean to leave you out. Looks like Ed is speaking. Oh, you know what? Can you, is the volume down on that? Hang on, Ed.
Yep, it was.
Okay, try it now.
Hi, this is Ed Tatum. Can you all hear me?
Yes, Ed, thanks.
So good evening. Scott and I are delighted to be here. We'll happily answer any of the questions, Joel. I think that was a good summary for this group. We've taken a look at a number of different ways to reconfigure the substation for future use and it's good engineering work. It's a good amount of time though to sit down and evaluate that and decide what our ultimate goals are for that. As Joel said, that's the future. So Joel, Skyliner here, it's your pleasure. I'll introduce myself. I'm Ed Tatum, Vice President of Transmission at AMP Transmission. Scott Keeswater is here with us as well. He's a Senior Vice President of Generation and Transmission Operations. So we appreciate you all taking the time and are available, it's your pleasure.
Thank you, we appreciate you being here. Anyone have any questions?
My understanding is one of the reasons we're doing this is because we were grandfathered in and then that's going away for being a transmission owner. If we don't, if, what is it? Number three, what's it? Number three, what is it?
Circuit breaker.
Circuit breaker number three does not go with this, are we gonna still be a transmission owner then?
No, we're not a transmission owner now. The difficulty in this reconfiguration is keeping our generation behind the meter so that we're not a generator. That's what we're grandfathered in.
Okay.
With an agreement with First Energy because those because those generators put out so much power when they're in full operation that we actually push power back out onto the grid.
Okay.
So we have an agreement with First Energy that allows that to happen.
And that continues?
That continues.
Okay. So the city's gonna get a big check?
The city's gonna get a check, yes.
Right, okay.
Now, there will be some expenses on the backend.
Yeah, we're gonna reconfigure some stuff.
Yep.
And if we don't do this, then it'd be up to the current ratepayers to basically pay this, right?
That's right.
And the potential cost for ratepayers is in excess of the check?
Yes. So, the check is $5.1 million.
Right.
Two years ago, we had an estimate of $3.2 million to rebuild that substation. Unfortunately, you know, you're gonna hear this a lot more lately, if you don't already.
It's more expensive now?
It's more expensive now. It's more expensive...
Okay.
Than what we originally thought.
And either way, we're gonna have to reconfigure it anyways, right?
We do. That's a reality.
Ellie, how do you feel about this agreement with the...
As far as I can tell, I'm comfortable with it, it's a continuation of what we've been doing, so I don't have any issues with it.
Thank you, appreciate that. Anyone else having questions? There's no questions, then we move on to, go ahead and call the roll, please.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Okay, that is...
Just wanted to say too, that I had a discussion with Greg about this, and I appreciate your input and also helping me to understand a little bit better and feel a little more secure about making this decision. It is a big decision, and I appreciate all of your work on it.
Took long enough. Uh, we are planning on a closing by the October 1st date, too.
Great. So that is passed on third read.
Thank you, Scott, and thank you, Ed.
Thanks for making the time for us to visit with you tonight, we appreciate your consideration.
Have a good night. Okay, moving on to item J, Good of the City. J1 is discussion or action on healthcare committee recommendation for employees to stay with the current healthcare plan, PPO2 and PPO3.
Joel? Thank you, Council President, we do have... Just verify, Laney, are you on the line? I saw her on earlier.
I'm here.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, let me get the right sheets up and get this... So, here's one over there. Can you see that? Okay, I was trying to zoom in. This one I really have to zoom in on, I can't get this bar out of the way. There we go. Okay. So every year we go through this. Uh, the Healthcare Cost Committee reviews what our costs are, healthcare costs are for BORMA on an annual basis, where basically what our insurance premiums changes are going to be. And, um, we put together the sheet that kinda shows what our makeup is of different user, employees and which plans they're on, and what type of plan they're on, whether they're on a single employee, spouse, or family. And overall, um, this year, our total increase, percentage increase, is 2.49%, which is 1% lower than last year. Uh, we feel that's really good. Uh, we did actually explore, looking into BORMA, looking into, since we're in a contract year, exiting BORMA and looking at other options, including other conglomerated plans with other organizations, public entities, and private entities. Uh, it turns out that the best option for us is to stick with BORMA. So, gotta do that once every three years, 'cause that's how long these contracts are. So, 2.49%, um, we are lower than the average. You know, BORMA is a pool, but it's also a tiered pool. So, it's not just a true pool where everybody's the same, it's...
There's a deep end.
There's a deep end. So, we're in the shallow end.
Couple people.
Yeah, we're in the shallow end, and we were also the only community out of BORMA, which I, Laney, correct me if I'm wrong, there's 13 communities now? Is that correct? It's 13 or 14? Maybe we lost her.
We lost her.
Sorry, there's 15.
15, yeah, I knew the number was growing, it's, BORMA's actually added. Yep. So, we're on the lower end, and we're the only community that got the 1% discount for the wellness program, or else we'd be at 3.49%. I think there were two other communities that had a 0.5% decrease, but we're the only one with the full 1%. Total, um, well, Laney, I don't know, I'm stealing your thunder, I'll just be quiet and let Laney talk, sorry.
So, if everyone can hear me, so our total increase for this year, like Joel said, it was 1% lower than last year. So for the both plans, it's $45,324 from 2021 to 2022, which, to me, I think we did amazing last year. And I think our wellness program is showing that it's doing what it's supposed to be doing and catching things early, and the employees are listening. So, yeah.
And then, because there's three healthcare cost committee items on here, the first one is to, uh, was voted on by the healthcare cost committee was to continue with the PPO2 and PPO3 plans.
Joel, who all makes up the healthcare committee? Who, what?
Uh, two members of each bargaining unit, two members of non-bargaining, um, and typically it's the city manager and finance director.
Thank you.
Did you vote twice?
No, I didn't, no, only one person votes from each, so, but two members are on it.
I just think it's important to point out who's on there, because it's people representing, you know, the union.
Good point.
Not, and, and the management side as well, it's not just us saying, hey, we think this is the best.
There should be a thank you to the employees to make the discount available.
Yeah, the wellness plan.
Yeah.
Yep.
They're taking advantage of it.
Yeah.
That's true. We did hear that other communities, not to get off topic, but other communities' increases were in the double digits, so...
All right. So what do you need from us today?
So all three, the first three are actually gonna be, have been written into the legislation. Uh, what is it, J, J1, 2, and 3 are a part of the legislation, so if you, when you get to 3, direct me to draft the legislation for all three, that's just...
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to item J2, discussion or action on healthcare committee recommendation to keep division and dental plans that are offered on a voluntary basis.
Uh, this one's easy. It's a voluntary basis, so they can opt in, employees can opt in or opt out. Uh, it's no extra expense to the city.
All right. And J3, discussion or action on healthcare committee recommendation to extend the BORMA Wellness Program for three years, 2022, 2023, and 2024, and also, at a $50 surcharge, be applied to the employee's health insurance premium when the employee and the employee's spouse, if applicable, do not complete their wellness check by the date specified for each year. Joel, or Laney, if you wanna talk about that a little bit?
This is just a continuation of basically everything that's been stated so far, continuation of the way it's set up right now. The only difference is, uh, the wellness program, we've, you know, the council's voted on that every year to see what the outcomes would come of it. Um, the recommendation that came from the committee now is to, um, apply that wellness program to the three-year contract. That way it gets re-upped every three years, and just kinda runs with the contract.
Laney, have you had a lot of opposition to, for the few that have that $50 surcharge in the past?
So, in previous years, we've only had, um, last year we had two employees that didn't receive their wellness exam. This year's the most we've had, and that is four. You know, and they really don't say anything, 'cause I think they know that they didn't get their wellness exam. And believe me, leading up to that deadline, I email, I call just to make sure they know that they have not completed the required, and that it's coming. So, there really hasn't been any pushback on that, because they have been well informed.
Okay, thank you. In here, it mentions the employee's spouse, if applicable. Now, if the employee has a spouse that works somewhere else and has, um, healthcare offered to them, do they have to take it from where their spouse?
We don't, we don't have that here.
Okay. Has that been discussed in the committee at all?
Um, over the past few years, since I've been here, it has been discussed, but it's never been a, anything that's made it to a recommendation from the committee to council. And I know we've discussed it here at times too, during budget time, but, uh, nothing's been, um, ever done with it, so...
Okay. Any other questions? We need a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation for J1, 2, and 3.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item J4, discussion or action, Keller Logistics CRA Agreement.
Joel?
Uh, thank you, this is just to request the... Yeah, this is a request that the council to direct the law director to draft legislation for the CRA agreement with Keller Logistics.
All right, do we have a motion?
Does Jennifer have anything to say about this? She's been sitting here quietly all night, didn't know if this is what's her thing or not.
No, I do not, I actually have the agreement.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for the interruption.
That's okay. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
All right, moving on to item J5, discussion or action to enter into a contract with Kester Corporation for washwater basin controls upgrade.
I'm gonna turn this one over to Jeff Wees.
All right.
Because he's the mastermind here.
Welcome, Jeff.
Come on up, Jeff, we can hear you on the microphone, everybody can hear you out there.
Are you on the spot?
Yeah.
You have to do a little karaoke also.
Yeah.
Happy birthday.
Could sing that. No, this is, uh, we approved it in our budgets last year to split the cost for the upgrade between the water and the wastewater plant. Been waiting pretty much all year with Kesters, they've been pretty busy to get us an actual quote for this upgrade. Uh, the controls at the washwater basin at the plant did not get upgraded in the plant project down there. It was thought to be added in later on, but with all the change orders, everything that was going on with it, we chose not to do it. Me and my staff have actually done a lot of the physical, uh, pipe working, mechanical work down in the pits to get that upgraded, and then we wanted to get the controls upgraded this year. The budget price, we put in there was around $32,000, split between the two departments. So about $15,000 for the water, $15,000 for the wastewater, came in under that. Um, the quote is actually there on what Kesters is gonna be providing for us. It's a pretty upgrade, nice upgrade for the system. It actually is gonna benefit wastewater probably more than us. As you guys know, all the sludge goes to wastewater now, and it goes at a hard slam, 300, 400 gallons a minute for about an hour and a half, shuts off, sits off for 12 hours, and then when it, the basin fills back up from our residuals again, another two hours of slugs. So this'll allow us to have VFD-driven motors, uh, in the control panel, so we can throttle that, control it off of levels, and the basin always supply them like a steady flow of the sludge, help their operation out, it'll also maintain our pumps and motors a lot better. Uh, the thermal overload relays that are in the control panel, right now, we've burned two motors up in the last five years on it, because they'll get hot during summer, they'll throw a false alarm, and then two hours later, we get a burn up on our motor. Uh, a lot of times it's happening overnight when nobody's here, 'cause the pump does run on and off while we're not staffed at the plant as well. So, this will get it in our programming software, we don't have it currently in it now, can't see anything over there, 'cause the controls are older, and it'll also allow wastewater to be able to control and see everything going on there as well. So we'll have a redundant system in case that one goes down at the water plant.
Pretty, pretty critical timing too, with the wastewater plant rehab.
That's correct.
So, they're gonna be under a lot of stress as it is, so having a slug of sludge coming down to them to trade is... Uh, can help with, you know, regulating the quantities, the flow, yep.
And it works with our current motor setup that we have in there, the motors that we have will adapt to the VFDs, so that's not a problem. All that's basically gonna get upgraded is our control center, and then all the remote IO will go back to the plant and to the wastewater plant, so... Kesters has done our whole project, they're local, phenomenal, they treat us real well. Wastewater's using them for their project right now. Controls are pretty necessary. We both have service contracts with them, uh, we make a phone call, they're there in 20 minutes, so... It's great to work with them, and the quote is a pretty reasonable quote.
So this is budgeted already, and you're looking to forego the bidding process and use Kesters, that correct?
That's correct.
And based, you believe it's in the city's best interest to do this, based on everything you've just said, and what you put in your memo?
Yep, that's correct.
So it's sole sources, then? I just wanted to get that on the record, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, anybody have any questions?
Jeff, ignorant question. Where is the washwater basin?
So it's a big toilet bowl right by the intake.
Okay, thank you, that's what I thought.
Yeah, yeah. All of our wastewater from our rapid sand filters goes over there, and then obviously all of our settling basin sludge from the new project goes over there, and it all goes to wastewater, so... We used to not have to worry about it so much, pump might run a couple times a day. When we wash the filter, now, it's on and off three or four times a day. It's just, it's definitely time for the controls to be upgraded, and having the sludge going over there was definitely a miss on the project.
Okay. That's what I assumed, but I thought I asked a question. Thank you, thank you.
All right, we need a motion to draft the... To direct the law director to draft legislation.
Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
All right, moving on to item J6, discussion or action on acceptance of a confined space tripod and ventilation fan from Campbell Soup to the Napoleon Fire Department. Hello, chief?
Recently, we had that confined space training, it was hosted, we hosted, but it was by Cleveland State University. During that time, during that class, the member, one of the members that was the instructor, is actually works out at Campbell Soup. He was the maintenance Brian Stuckey, uh, was the maintenance gentleman out there for a long time. But during that class, we had experienced a thing that, for all of our training purposes, we were using primary rescue equipment. So you're taking, you know, equipment out of service for the training, and when you're getting all that stuff out, then, um, you know, that's out of service. You have to repack it before you were to get the call. So, uh, during that conversation, Brad had brought up that they had this tripod and this vent fan out at Campbell's that they were no longer gonna be using, and had offered that donation, so that's what this is here. And so we're super grateful for that, because that's gonna be able to be utilized a lot more, whether it be within the station or out... to be utilized a lot more, whether it be within the station or out of the training grounds, without having to strip the trailer, that sort of thing, so.
That's great, thank you. All right, we have a motion to accept.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
All right, thank you to Campbell Soup. Item J. 7, discussion or action, proposed addition of stop signs at the intersection of Bales and West Moreland.
I believe these should be referred to the Municipal Properties Committee. Number eight, number seven and eight.
Okay. Let's get that, Rox. All right, and let's read, number eight is proposed changes to fees for curb and sidewalk replacement program. We'll refer that to the municipal properties as well. You okay with that, Mr. Chair? J. 9, discussion or action, Finance Department update.
Yeah, please. It was pretty, for three weeks, this was a pretty, pretty mundane three weeks, so that's good.
He's not here yet, we're not going to want.
So, we did have a CD that, that matured at .4%. We just rolled it back in with that phenomenon, interest rate of .23%. It's not great, but there, it's a one-year, $746,000. We rolled the month of August today, so that was done. Don had, did have a chance to review it. 2021 budgets are being reviewed, put together by each department head, so we're looking at the 2021s to see if there are any, you know, big-ticket items or some, any kind of surprises or overruns or anything like that, so that way, we can kind of formulate what we think the carryover would be plus, then we get into 2022 budgets. Personnel forms are completed and are under review. Shut-off day this week for utilities is Thursday instead of Wednesday because of the holiday, and we haven't had to use Schoenhardt a whole lot, that's great, I do recommend keeping him on board. But that'll be up to Kevin, and Don's a wealth of knowledge, he's been, we've been a client of his for a very long time, probably 30 years, maybe, or more. So, that's all I have for the update, so. I did want to mention that, thank you to the staff, Finance Department staff for stepping up these past few weeks, and we're able to, you know, just maintain the course right now. Batted down a few surprises, and, you know, hopefully, cleared the slate as best we can for Kevin for when he shows up on Monday.
Joel, do you have the, the schedule that we, the calendar for the budget? I know it was in the packet, I didn't bring it with me. We were talking about that a little bit, too, to make sure that, I'll take you across, send it over here. Going to make sure that everyone is in agreement with the date that we want to do the actual budget and not out of town and things like that.
You know, I don't have that.
It's in the packet, it's way at the beginning.
Oh, it's at the beginning, okay, okay, good.
It's right out through the agenda, for the minutes.
After the minutes, you said?
So, right now, we have it on the, timeline here for November 5th and 6th. Rox, were you going to be out of town at that time?
I'll be here for the 5th and 6th.
Okay, that's, I wasn't sure, during the Finance and Budget Committee meeting, couldn't remember.
That's Friday and Saturday, I'm assuming.
Yep.
Yep, okay, so just wanted to make sure that we were all going to be here.
What if we're not?
I need to get kickoff council, I think, I don't know.
It's not that easy to get off council.
No, all right, okay, so.
One, one last thing on that, I don't know if you wanted a, a budget over to, I don't want to make assumptions, but since there are only four candidates on the ballot, I don't know if Dr. Dave wanted, wanted us to get him one, or?
Normally, we invite, normally, we invite incoming people to come and sit during the meeting.
Yep.
Yes, so you, that date does not work for you as of right now? Okay, so, as we get closer, like we talked about that, I know this is a living, you know, breathing document where if, that's put pressure on our new finance director, but when he comes in and we have, and he's like, man, I'm ready for a budget earlier, maybe we can do it a week earlier, or if we need to, a week later, just kind of play by ear.
Two weeks.
All right.
Or earlier.
Right.
Does earlier work?
Mm-hmm, for me. I think, I think, wait a minute.
Like I said, we can revisit this every, every meeting and just kind of take a look at it.
Okay.
It's tentatively set for that, right, sir?
Correct. All right, anything else on the Finance Department update?
Nope, nothing for me.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, we'll go around the table here. Start with Ross.
Nothing for me.
Okay, Ken?
I have nothing.
Dan?
Yes, sir. Number one, the CIC has its annual meeting, which did not take place last year on Wednesday, October the 6th, from 5:00 to 7:00, I believe it's at the Armory, as in the past, and we can have a table of six, which we need to confirm by the 24th. I know I plan on being there, and I'm assuming the mayor was going, but we can, we have room for four more people.
You can count on me.
That's my number one.
I'll be there.
Wednesday, October the 6th.
Yeah, I'll be there.
And do we consider that a, that we're going to have a table, so we can share that with you?
Yeah, we'll get six somehow.
We'll find six people.
Oh, I assume they're up here.
No.
No.
Realistically.
Realistically.
Two other items, one, I do understand, and I had talked to Joel about this through email, the park board was not able to meet because they didn't have a quorum here this past month, but the Lions Club is still, is looking to resume its Halloween parade, that, of course, was not held last year. Halloween itself is on a Sunday, so I'm assuming they won't have the parade that day, and probably not trick-or-treating that day, but just an FYI, the Lions Club wants to know the date from, I guess, the park board as soon as possible, so they can make arrangements for that parade.
The recommendation from staff is to have trick-or-treat night on October 31st.
On Sunday?
Yep.
Okay, so the parade would not be on a Sunday?
Okay.
Because it's never on the same day, I believe, as trick-or-treat, correct?
It's, it's usually on the Monday before.
Okay.
And also, just not that, I, I kind of, I had to look it up. We usually try to avoid, or the board usually tries to avoid Wednesdays, Fridays, Saturdays for having, if October 31st falls on a, on any of those days, they move it. And that has to do with church and?
Sporting.
I think sporting events on Friday night.
High school football, it's a big one.
So, in other words, I can prob, we can probably share with the Lions Club that pending park board approval, that Monday, which would be the?
25th.
And finally, Mr. Fire Chief, would you like to share a little bit about what went on down at the training site today?
Sure. Today, Roger Miller from Miller Construction actually made it over to the training facility site in the road ground for the grain bin train simulator and also the leg. So, the grain leg is going to be going up, they're going to be, what they're doing is they're clearing all the land right now, going to be putting the stone down, and then there'll be a basic concrete, so there'll be a 29 by 29-foot pad that'll hold the, hold the 27-foot round grain bin. They're expected to be there for the next couple, three days, and then it'll, then they'll be gone for a week or so, and then they'll be back, and then they may be seeing some progress. We're hoping to have that grain bin up and also that grain leg simulator, which I call, is just a simulator because it's not an actual grain leg, it's an ID, but it'll have tie-offs and things up there, and we're hoping to have that all completed by the end of the year.
Thank you, and I'm sorry I wasn't able to join you this morning, but I thought we could at least share with everybody what was going on.
Yeah, I understand, thanks, Dan.
Okay, that's all, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Billy, what's seeking economic development for city-owned ground, what's that one?
So, we've got, we've got another one coming. I just, the, the, I don't think it would need to be economic development for the purchase of property. I think there's, yeah, there's just a section two entitled property in Rule 8.2.4. To consider the purchase of property is just fine, if that's what you're looking at, or if you're considering the sale, you could say that as well.
So, economic development for the potential sale of property?
Sure.
Okay, I need one of those, thank you. Had a talk last week on August the 31st, which, which Governor Dewine said as opioid overdose awareness day. That was at a renewed mind, and you have some people there that are working really hard at getting sober and maintaining sobriety, so was, it was, I, I thought it was a really good event for them to have that there. They had a bunch of flags out with names of people that have passed away from opioid overdose, and I appreciate, Rox, Roxanne helped me write that, so I appreciate that. I know, I see it right there, but I'm going to steal some of your thunder and talk about the, the employee appreciation lunch, I'm not trying to read your notes, Lori, but I'm reading your notes, so. So, thanks to, thanks to Lainey and Stephanie, and then the two chefs, Tony and Chief O'Brien, for, for all the work that they did. During that, we gave out certificates, people that have been here in increments of five years. I know Chief Matt got his for 25 years, and Billy didn't come, so he'll give his right now. So, Billy's been here, believe it or not, five years.
Congratulations.
And then, as we all know, Monday is the 20th anniversary of the attacks of 9/11, so, thank you, Chief Mac, for you and all your people, Chief O'Brien, thank you and all your people, and make sure you thank them, and also thank any military members. You all paid a heavy, heavy price that day and, and years since, so just going to keep that in mind on Saturday. That is what I have.
Fall Festival.
They have something to Fall Fest on noon, I think, yeah, yeah. What exactly is, I don't know, Jeff, but, we're doing something that, have a moment of silence and those kinds of things.
Sure.
Maybe ringing another bell or something, I don't know, but, at Fall Fest, which is on Saturday also, 9/11, so. That's all I had, thank you very much.
Just to thank you to the chefs and Lainey and Stephanie for organizing the staff appreciation lunch. I thought it was a really nice event, and thank you to our city staff for everything that they do. Had some nice conversations, and it was a nice afternoon, wasn't it, Councilman Hayes? Yes, true. And just to Kevin, just want to welcome you on board, look forward to working with you, and have a lot of expectation. You were hands-down the selection by the committee, and have full confidence that you'll do a great job, so thank you.
Appreciate you, Kevin, I look forward to starting on Monday.
Thank you, Joel, outgoing finance.
Oh.
Now, outgoing city manager. That's all for me.
Jeff?
I would like to know if, how far along the bridge is, do we have any idea? And?
As far as I know, it's on schedule.
For?
Of the Second River Bridge.
Yes, what kind of timeframe do we know?
September next year?
Okay, all right.
My understanding, is that, is that correct?
No. Supposed to be summer, right, wasn't supposed to be summer of next year, but they could?
Maybe, yeah, it could be July.
Team and, team and material depended on this year, right?
Yeah, it's definitely next year, well into next year.
I was going to say, it's probably time now to start getting arse in the water, to block truck traffic downtown.
Yeah.
Do you think that's a good idea, I mean?
Well, you know, when, once the bridge is open, it's a good time to really study that, so that we can know, like, what the patterns are. I mean, talking with Chad about it and chiefs, you know, I mean, it's probably, your, your everyday drivers that are going to figure it out are going to figure it out, but, you know, you'll have some stragglers, I think. If they're once in a while drivers, they'll figure it out, and then hopefully, that the GPS companies start changing their.
It'll be an issue to the GPS maps update, Jeff.
That's really, honestly, that's really what it comes down to.
I was just wondering if there's anything that we are going to do, but I won't have to worry about that next year.
Well, I'm going to come up to Board of Public Affairs.
Sure. But, that's all I have.
All right, Molly?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Billy?
Welcome to Kevin. See you soon. That's it, thanks.
Joel?
Thank you, welcome, Kevin, glad to have you. Did want to bring up something, we do have COVID quarantines, we're still dealing with that, we're still battling that, it's not going away. It exists, it's real, but that's, you know, we're fighting through it, and we do have some quarantines out there, so we're monitoring it, and luckily, Lainey's, Lainey's still with us, too, so that's good. We do have a 9/11 appreciation luncheon for first responders. Lainey, is that Thursday? Is that Thursday? Yeah, Thursday lunch.
Yeah, it's Thursday.
Yep, so if anybody's available to make it, come on down, right here, right outside in the hallway here. The last thing I have is a request for executive session regarding, could be a couple of things, but, related to confidential information, related to marketing plans and negotiations with other political subdivisions. Did you get all that?
Motioning for executive session for Joel's.
You'll have to repeat it.
All right, ready.
Let's see if he says the same thing.
Yeah, don't let him copy. You and the mayor, that's where, all right. I don't have anything, you guys pretty much covered everything except for, welcome, Kevin, looking forward to working with you very much. So, all right, so we can have, we have a motion to go into executive session for economic development, consideration, sale of property.
Sub moved.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
All right, and we go, motion for executive session for what Joel said a minute ago.
Confidential information related to marketing plans and negotiations with political subdivisions.
Sub moved.
Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
All right, are we moving to the other room? We're kicking everybody out. I have a motion to come out of executive session for economic development, consideration, sale of property.
Sub moved. Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
All right, can I have a motion to come out of executive session for economic development? Joel, do you have the wording?
Matters to remain confidential for marketing plans and negotiations with a political subdivision.
Good job.
Sub moved.
Second.
Rox, call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Yes. Anybody!
All right.
Action taken.
No action taken, thank you. Item L, approve payment of bills, in the absence of any objections or corrections, L stand approved.
Do you know where it is, Roxanne?
No, I'm talking about, I don't know.
Okay. What page is that on, Jeff?
Yeah, what page is that?
Homework, it might be final.
Seven. Thank you, Jennifer.
Yes, thank you. I think it's final, because I think we, it's the final part of these, we, all of them, a little bit of a repeat, and it's got, um...
I think mostly if it's not the seeding here.
Well, it's, the reseeding job they did last time's crap yet, still, I'm surprised that citizens up there haven't complained.
There's still, Katie's been...
Okay.
Yeah, there's retainage, here it is. Sorry, stole your thunder about people.
I thought you'd do this.
Well, yeah, but, that's mine too, right there. Boy, don't you...
Can't read that.
That's right? Well, but, I'm looking at yours like, I'm gonna steal your thunder, dang it.
What was the amount on that one? So I don't have to...
Two dollars. Thirteen, six ninety-four, sixty-three. Hey, Lori, I'll use the rule of ladies first next time, I won't let him do that.
It appears we paid him the full amount, they're, they were at four hundred ninety-nine thousand and some change in the original contract amount. Um, gross amount due, five hundred and twelve thousand, so, um, it's that, uh, little over two percent deviation from, uh, the full contract. Um, and it appears that it is quantities, so I have the quantity sheet attached.
All right.
So it's just the, uh, difference between, um, what was in, what engineering quantities were compared to what the actuals were.
Okay.
I'll double check that, if it changes, I will email it to everyone in the weekly FYI.